It is five fifteen. It's time for us to get started. Good evening. Welcome to the December twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan. I'm the chair of this board. For those of you who have never attended one of our meetings, I'll quickly explain how the meeting is conducted. First, we'll ask the applicant to come to the microphone right up here. State your name and address for the record and discuss your proposed project or request for variance. After that's done, the floor will be open for anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against the proposed project or variance. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make decision on each case. The public's welcome to stay through deliberations, but again, no public input will be permitted. For those applicants wishing not to stay through deliberations, planning department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decision. Bear with me. The voice is gonna come and go all night, so. Uh zoning board of appeals is five member board tonight. We have by all five members present constituting a quorum. I will now call the roll. Ms. Resonity. Mr. Matzo.
Present.
Ms. Bucci. Mr. Landers.
Present.
Mr. Donovan is present. And I see we had minutes from last month's meeting. You guys had a chance to look them over?
Yes. Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minute meetings from November fourteenth.
Before we do that, anybody have any updates or changes that need to be made? Okay, then I see. Is that a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, that's unanimous. We have to go through some standard stuff every month, no matter what, and it helps us get to our agenda time timeframe. Cause our first case is uh scheduled for five twenty-five. So we're already ahead of schedule. But as I've been told before, we can have the applicant come to the mic and state your name. So the first case is Alexander Conti thirty-two North Street area variance to construct an eight hundred sixty-four square foot garage where six hundred seventy-six feet square feet is the maximum allowed in the R three multi-unit.
Hello. I'm Alex. You too. Thirty-two North Street. So it's just a three-car garage. Um it's gonna be in the style of the house historic and it's a double lot, so all the set packs are in there. Um there's really nothing crazy about it. There's no plumbing, so I'm not gonna turn it into an apartment or anything. It's just a standard three-car garage that I need for storage.
And it's gonna have electric. Okay. Pretty, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, very simple. Two cars is just not enough, so that's why I'm applying for the variance.
Any questions from members of the board?
No, looking at the plans, I mean, I think it looks awesome. That's my opinion there. I mean, it's not it's not like it was just put together.
I agree. Quite often we get these applicant applications, just like very similar to yours, and it will be written essentially on the back of an envelope. Which is acceptable, but it's it's very nice to see a well-drawn-up plan. Any other comments before we?
Do we have any objections? Can't anybody?
I did not see anything, any, anything written in the file. But uh do you have anything else to add about your application?
No.
I've been in the neighborhood for over ten years, so um I don't know. I just work really hard in that area and I'm always looking to improve the area, so I think this will improve it more.
Okay, at this point, I'm just stalling for time because we're we're now way ahead of schedule. Cause we, we can't um open the public hearing until five twenty-five. But thank you for bringing us your application. You're welcome to go take a seat until we reach our five twenty-five for the next thing we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. While we're checking, I will make uh enter into the record here. Uh the this application is uh for two family residents in which is a secret type two action. No further environmental review is required. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the building of this garage? Anybody? I'm assuming most of you are here for the next two cases. Okay. Um then I would uh move to open the public hearing for thirty-two North Street. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright, that's unanimous. Um then officially, anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance for thirty-two North Street for the uh three, three-bay garage, and if anybody wants to see the plans, they are very nicely done plans. Um feel free to step forward. Okay. Okay, then I would move to close the public hearing for thirty-two North Street. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Alright, so this is a uh area variance. And there's certain criteria we have to take a look at. Is it undesirable change to the neighborhood? Is there a reasonable alternative? Is it a substantial request? Is it gonna have an inverse, inverse, adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions? And was it self-created? So regarding undesirable change. And by the, we have to focus on this being a hundred eighty-eight square feet extra coverage over the allowable by code. Okay. I don't think we approach anything near the total lot coverage, so that's not an issue this time.
My question is, are there any other three uh bay car garages in the area?
Oh, yeah. There are a number of three and four bay garages in, in that general area. Is the applicant still there? You're up there. Are you familiar with any other three-bay garages in the area? Yeah, and there's one right across the street from my old house, too. So I know there are a number of them. Yeah. Okay. Can I help you?
We cannot hear you up there.
Sorry.
And some of the mics are not turned on. We cannot understand you.
I think, alright, sorry, I'll try to get a little closer. It's it'll matter more when we get to that next couple of cases. This part's not that thrilling, so I'm I'm saving you a little nap time. Um undesirable change to be over the square footage allowable.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would argue, looking at the drawings, that I I wouldn't think it's undesirable to be that much larger. It's about twenty percent larger than than allowable. Was there a reasonable alternative? Alright, the applicant did state that he he looked at a two-car garage, but the two-car garage did not give him the space that he was looking for. So um I'm somewhat satisfied with that response. Is it a substantial request to get the one hundred eighty-eight square feet extra? I mean, if you compare it to a four and five-bay garage, no.
Right. And he also went up, looks like.
Yeah. Yeah, when, when you guys speak, uh you gotta to yourselves, don't follow out on as I'm doing. Speak into the mic. Um is it a substantial request? I would argue that it's not substantial for this particular item in this particular place on the west side. Any, any other opinions there?
I agree.
Okay, that's fine. Uh would the allowing of this area variance cause an adverse impact to the physical or environmental conditions? I would argue that it'd be almost unrecognizable to anyone other than than the applicant who has the extra space. And whether or not it was self, self-created hardship, yes, this, the, the applicant choosing to add a garage, it is self-created, but I'm not, I'm not too put off by that. Any further discussion on uh thirty-two North?
I agree.
Okay, John, do you have a?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance to construct an eight hundred and sixty-four square foot garage for six hundred and seventy-six square foot is the maximum allowed in an R three multi-unit dwelling district. It's a hundred and eighty-eight square feet more. But after looking at these drawings, I mean, the building, just to me, I think it'll fit right in with the neighborhood. That's my opinion.
Okay, uh can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, and I would note that's unanimous. Thank you. Good luck going forward. Now on to our second case of the night. And that is Ten Johnson, and by all means, people, let me know if I wander away from the mic and you can't hear me. Throw your hands up and I'll, I'll try to do better. So the applicant or applicant's agent, could you please uh approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record? And this is Ten Johnson, and this is not exactly, just for a little you'll probably tell me what this is all about, but it's not exactly what we're used to seeing. We're used to seeing area variances or use variances. An area variances can be signs, fences, buildings, all that kind of stuff. Or a use variance could be um housing in a place where it's not normally at, or uh types of buildings in places where they don't belong in the, in the plan. Uh but you're talking about something different, so tell me all about it.
Uh good evening. Um uh good evening. My wife Cassandra and I are local landlords. Uh we've been renting in Binghamton for um outer.
You just need to move it closer.
Just move it closer, too.
Uh my wife Cassandra and I are local landlords. We've been renting apartments in Binghamton for sixteen years. Um we have a good reputation with our tenants and our neighbors. Uh we consider the city our partner. Um our offices are located at sixty-five Leroy. Oh, and we live, um we live in Vestal at four, four, five Robin Lane. Um but our offices are located at sixty-five Leroy Street. Uh we have full office staff and maintenance staff, which allow us to give great customer service to our residents. Uh we rent to students, non-students, professionals, families, people receiving income assistance from various government and charitable programs. We rent to them on Binghamton's west side, south side, uh First Ward District, Johnson City and Vestal. Um my wife and I um and our tenants um have some concerns. Um there are hundreds of students living in R one and R two zones. Um and there are no zoning board signs in front of their houses for meetings. Um we know of over fifty properties in these zones that are renting students, and um I guess we are the first ones to come in front of this board. Um and we just wanna make sure there is equal enforcement of the zoning ordinances um going on. We know other people receive letters, um but no one has been um for you guys yet, and we were out of town last month, so we actually moved our meeting back a month, but still, I guess we are the first ones um to go here. So um there was a short conversation had with tenants at both of our properties, and from these short conversations, um people in the city made determination that the tenants were not families. We're not sure what questions were asked or how that determination was made. Um I know there's a list of criteria required to be a functional family. We don't know how many of these criteria have to be met um to have the determination that these folks are families or not. Um we do wanna make sure everyone is treated fairly and equally. Um in the past, it was well-known that property should not be rented to groups of four or more in the less dense residential neighborhoods. Uh we've known this for years, and we've been part of the discussion for a long time, since back when Terry Renia uh was on city council. Um the two properties we're here to discuss tonight have two apartments in each house. Each apartment has three bedrooms, and we do not rent to more than three people in each apartment. Uh the leases for these two properties, uh we were discussing tonight, were signed before. The zoning changes were made last year. Um they are not chopped up or modified houses with added bedrooms. They were purposely built with three bedrooms per apartment. Um we have received zoning certificates for both these properties when we refinanced them a couple of years ago, which state that there's three bedrooms per apartment. Um we don't do rooming houses. Each apartment signs one lease. And we provide no utilities in the lease. Um so the tenants have to pay their, they share their rent, they share the utilities, they share their internet, other household expenses um amongst themselves. Um our tenants deserve to be able to finish out their leases without being concerned for their housing. Um they're good members of the community, and they sign these leases before the changes were made to the zoning code last year. That's what we're asking for. Um first property here at Ten Johnson Ave. Um we purchased this in two thousand and fifteen. Um and for the last six years or so, we've had student tenants there. Um the neighbors have my phone number. Um I haven't been any major issues. I've gotten some phone calls about leaves from one of our trees and an occasional call about um people parking in front of houses, but unfortunately, with the opposite side of the street parking, people doesn't park in front of your house. I mean, that's, that's city life and um and to me, a knowledge, to my knowledge, the police, I don't believe, ever been into this property. Um but the makeup is, on the right side, um there are three residents. Um this is their fourth year living together, and two of those three residents have lived together for five years. Um one of the residents is not a student. They have graduated last year from the university, and they stayed in Binghamton for a job. Um there's one of the other residents who is um graduating in one week. Um this is their final semester. And then there's one student who is a graduate level student who won't be graduating until next June. Um but in one week, there will only be one of these three residents who goes to the university. Um that is at a graduate level. Um all three of them have jobs and low and work locally. Um since they've been living together for four, and in the case of two and five years, they do have some of their own furniture and kitchen appliances, which they've, you know, purchased over the years. Um these tenants share their rent costs, their utilities, their internet and other household expenses. Um they also share in the preparation, storage and consumption of food. I know there's a list in that section, um four, ten, dash, five about the family. I mean, they hit many of these points. Um as I said, that is um that is the right side of the property. On the left side, there are three uh residents. They are all students. This is their fourth year living together. Um this is the second year at this particular apartment, so they've been in this apartment over a year. Um one of these tenants works locally. Um they also own some of their own furniture and kitchen appliances together. And they share their rent costs, utilities, internet and other household expenses. Um they also share in their preparation of food, um stored and consumption of food. Um again, points um criteria made for a functional family, but these, you know, four years together, these are pretty stable tenants here. Um that's all I have to say about this one particular house, unless you had any questions for me.
Sure, members of the uh board have any questions for the applicant?
I don't know.
I don't have any specific questions. This is a little bit, like I said, this is a little bit different for us. We're normally looking at kind of nuts and bolts and distances from a board, from a property line. Um so uh
Kelly, yes, would it be helpful for, for him to maybe label each side? So group A meets uh certain criteria, group B meets certain criteria?
Yeah.
That we can keep track because the what the board is supposed to be doing is determining it whether or not these, each individual group meets definition of family. And so i- if you could say maybe group A and group B and list the criteria for each that that may be.
Sure, let um so let's do um so the right side, call them group A if you want. Um so there, there's this list in the, the code, so um A, it says occupants must share the entire dwelling, the unit in which the various occupants act as separate rumors cannot be deemed occupied by functional family. So they share the whole unit. We don't do rooming houses, individual rooms, they, they share that. So B, it speaks about the household must have stability with respect to the purpose of this chapter. Evidence of stability may include the following. One is minor children. There are no minor children. Um two is uh sharing expenses for food, rent or ownership costs, utilities, other household expenses, and the preparation, storage and consumption of food. They'd share all of those together. Um three, it talks about addresses for voters, registration, driver's license, motor vehicles. Um that I do not believe I have not looked at, but I'm assuming that those documents do not all say the same thing. Uh but they have moved around a little bit, so not sure. Um number four in that section is common ownership of furniture and appliances, which they do. Uh five is enrollment of dependent children, local schools. Again, that, that's not applicable to them. Uh six is employment of households within a hundred miles of city Binghamton. All three of these residents do have local jobs. Uh and then the number seven is showing that the household has been living together as a unit for a year or more. Again, this um particular apartment has um all three have been living together for four years in total, and two of the three have been living together for five years. Uh the last point in the definition is any other factor reasonably related to whether or not the group or persons are the functional equivalent of family. I at this point, I don't have any other additional information about that. I can certainly get some, if needed, to provide some more clarity. Um so that's the right side. The left side, um again, we can go through this same list. A, occupants must share the entire dwelling unit. They do. B, in terms of stability, evidence is one, there are no minor children, so they do not hit B one. Two, sharing expenses or rent, sharing expenses of food, rent or ownership costs, utilities and other household expenses, preparation, storage and consumption of food. They do that. Number three speaks about, again, the addresses. I don't have anything that says they have the same addresses for their driver's license or motor vehicle registration. Four is common ownership of furniture and appliances that they do have. Number five, enrollment dependent does not apply to them. There are no minor children. Number six, um employment um in the city of Binghamton, um there was only one of these three tenants who works locally in this particular apartment. Um and then number seven, showing the household has been living together for a year or more. Again, this is their fourth year living together. This is their second year at this particular location. Um and then number eight, any other factor reasonably related? I don't have any of that information at this time, but I can get more clarity on that if you so choose to have a.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. So um do either of those units come with any furniture or appliances?
We do provide, I mean.
Do any of those units?
Yeah, we, we provide, we provide the appliances, yes, and we do provide some furniture. Um so that is there, but they brought their own additional items there, and we had us remove some of the furniture that was there.
Thank you. What types of furniture do you provide?
Well, at least states beds, desks, dressers, like a couch in the room and stuff. So these particular tenants, they had, they had some of their beds. We removed some of the beds. Um they had their own, and the other stuff that's there, we just, we just keep, I mean, at this point, we say, listen, if you if you get an extra couch you wanna bring your own, that's fine. Put the other one, you know, make it sectional or something out of it. Um so as I said, some of our furniture is still there, but they did bring their other things, and they do have like the small kitchen appliances and all that. Um they have of their, that they share. I mean, obviously, the large appliances in any standard rental, the landlord is gonna provide like a fridge, a stove, you know, dishwasher and that.
So in both the right and left-hand side, you guys substantially furnish the units.
Well, correct, yes. There are a lot of furnitures ours, and they bring some additional to itself, correct?
And then um do they live there twelve months a year?
It's a twelve-month lease.
No, but do they live there is what I'm asking you.
Um I mean, I don't check to see when they're there or not. Um but they are, I mean, the one student has been having a job since she was in May when she graduated, so she's been here. The other two tenants in, we'll call unit A, which is the right side. I don't know if they were here over the summer months or not. Um get more information about that if you so choose, but the utilities they turn on in the beginning of their, their lease, and they, you know, they go forward from that point.
Would you be able to provide the board with additional information concerning their voter registration, location, driver's license, information, motor vehicle registration, sorry about that?
Yeah, I, I can certainly get any of that. If, if, you know, if you would like, that's not a problem. I just, I didn't want to throw them for too much um before this, but yes, we can certainly get whatever information you're looking for.
Thank you.
And again, we're looking, just, we want these tenants, they've been great tenants, be able to finish out their housing of this lease without any concern that anything is going to happen. Some of them are very nervous. I don't think the, that was necessary, but um that's what we're looking for, and obviously going forward needs more clarity on, on what is and isn't allowed in these areas. The, the code enrolling is, it's um I think Russ will speak a little more to that, but you know, is one student allowed there? If they're a graduate student, are they allowed? Is two students allowed to live together as roommates? Or as the city of Binghamton just gone ahead and said, there are no roommates allowed in this, in, in these R one and R two zones, if one happens to take some classes at the university. I think there's some clarity there. Um you know, these are not fraternity boys. These are not people who cause problems or disturbances. Um so as I said, we wanna make sure people can enjoy the city in all areas, um not just be forced to live in some of the higher density zones. A lot of these students live in this particular location for a little bit lower density. I don't think they are out of character with the neighborhood um in terms of noise and other things that particularly are concerned. When these students come to us, we always say, hey, this is a, this is a little bit different, a quieter area. Um you know, just, just so you know, before we show you his house and waste your time and hours, and they say, no, we understand. We've looked at the map, we've looked at these neighborhoods. We seek this out because this is how we want to live, and a lot of these students are graduate level, so they are older. Some of them have jobs and come back to school afterwards, so it's not just a bunch of eighteen, nineteen-year-old kids running around this neighborhood that we would never encourage them to live there. Um and I don't think we've had any groups like that um since we've owned this property.
I, I, I think everybody here and the board would like to have a lot more clarity on just the issues you were just talking about. So I bet, this, this is a place to start. Any other questions? I'm not sure we can answer all the questions that are being raised. We are, we are not the ultimate authority in Binghamton. We, we have a very small niche of uh that we can be cons uh and be involved in and make decisions on. Um I think at this point, uh if you'd like to take a seat and we'll, we'll call you back if we have more questions. Uh obviously, this is not gonna be a simple process, um being new to us and a lot of issues. So uh I guess we need to uh make a couple of motions. You're, you're released for the time being.
Thank you very much.
Um, thank you very much. And I would, this is a time when we talk about things like uh who's taking lead on seeker and whatnot, but I don't think we have that. I don't think we have any seeker type of issues here, do we?
No, the, the interpretation of a, of a zoning determination is a type two action, so there's no seeker required.
You made my noted thing there, yes. Secret type two, no, no further action uh for the environmental assessment. Um I, I guess I can make a motion to open you. I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for Ten Johnson. And second, all in favor?
Hi.
I see all of you up there. I want you all to get a chance to be heard. I also don't wanna be here till two o'clock in the morning, so I would ask that you keep your, your um your comments relatively brief. Um I'm probably going to ask for roughly five minutes if that's not gonna be an imposition. Let me know right up front if that is an imposition, okay? So at this point, anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed project, please come forward.
Alright, good evening, members of the board. My name is Russ Mainz. I'm an attorney, and I do represent the owners of the two applicants. I worked with them to put the application together. Um I
Welcome to Binghamton.
Thank, you know, I wanna tell you, uh I met with your zoning and planning staff a couple of months ago and city attorney. The atmosphere here is much nicer than where I come from. I find it, uh and it's beautiful setting, so I really appreciate the welcome. Um so the, I, I, you know, I wanna keep my head shorted in five minutes, too. You've heard enough from me. You've got enough paperwork from me. Uh all, my suggestion, uh what, what I, I know your city attorney um uh I've spoken with him a little bit about this application. What I think puts this on a little bit different footing is that the two leases were signed for the current law went into effect. Uh in one, they were signed September eleventh of twenty twenty-two. The other, October third and eleventh, I, third and eighteenth, I can't, oh, the dates are in the letters. Uh but they're both signed before the legislation was passed. So my suggestion would be to consider a very limited decision tonight that a very limited decision tonight that preserves the status quo until as you have, you give the shelf one. Because we're in a much different footing than we will be next year when potential tenants are going to be coming in or different. Uh, the leashes told me that on, in, I believe, eighteen Murray, one of the student tenants is to graduate next week. And there's to be no replacement, I understand, so that means we're having a little bit of attrition. Um, I have nothing else unless the board has any questions.
Do you folks have any questions for Mr. Maine? Thank you, thank you very much. I'm, you know, to, to partially respond to that, I'm not sure what authority we have to enter an opinion on even that type of a question.
Yeah, it's a determination, as you were pointing out, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a determination of the family unit.
Correct. Uh, so if it's not, uh, there may be an enforcement issue. Everybody knows my opinion. You got in the paperwork, you know, you're. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed, uh, decision, I guess you would say. And mind you, we're, we're meeting to, uh, discuss, uh, whether or not uh, this type of situation meets the functional and factual equivalent of a family in the R1 residential single unit dwelling district.
Hello, hello. My name is PJ Daly. I am a resident of Johnson Ave, and I hate doing this stuff. Um, I've lived on Johnson Ave a long time. I know this house. I've lived on Johnson Ave a long time. I know this house. My kids went to daycare there. I have grave concerns that number one, it pushes the envelope of the, the the newly designed um, district for students, and I'm concerned that it reduces housing for families. In my work, I'm a social worker and I have loads of people who can't afford housing in our community because students um, are able to pay more, they're able to pay by the bedroom, and so perhaps perhaps after twenty fifteen, this house became a different house, but up until then, it was the house that families lived in and people raised children in. So I'm concerned about. I also think that this law, you know, this is kind of inconvenient in a way for the owners of the house, but remember the legislation was passed was that when anytime there was, there were students in a house and the lease was finished, that they would not be allowed to re-rent to students. I could be wrong about that. Anyway, uh, the, the other concern is when i- if the board makes a decision that the tenants can stay during this period, what about next time? And even if the students that currently live there meet the criteria for a family, the next time we could be facing solo cups and condoms. You know, it, it really depends on that. I own a property on Front Street and after SantaCon, I had lots of work to do. And that doesn't seem fair to me. Johnson Ave is, is a, a street of many two-family homes. All of us are families raising children and, and others. Um, and and this is outside the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I okay. There's, you can, you can line up like a, an on deck circle over here if you'd like to.
Hopefully everybody can hear me. Okay, it's not too soft, too loud. My name is Steve C. Persaud. I live on Beethoven Street in the Ablebenet Tract Historic District. And I was here in this, uh, the same position back in two thousand ten because in late two thousand nine, we had a group of students living next door to us at fifteen Beethoven Street. And there were a number of issues with noise and with parking, cleanliness, parties, et cetera. And then I learned about the zoning code and what's permitted and what's not, and filed a complaint. Code officer came out and investigated, uh, prior to the new year, two thousand ten, and ruled, uh, that the, uh, the property was in violation. Fast forward a couple of months later, came to a ZBA hearing and, uh, it was ruled that the, uh, the code officer's determination was correct, that the group of students living there uh, was not a, a functional family. So there is some precedent and around the same time, there are other properties on the west side where uh, this sort of thing was, was playing out and the, the group of residents there in particular, although yes, they shared the dwelling in its entirety. They're not going into each other's bedrooms. It's different than me and my wife and my son sharing a house. We can go into any room that we want. If you're living with other students, you don't generally do that unless you have some type of relationship where that's appropriate. Uh, I'm not really sure what the situation is there. The student's lease was for the duration of the academic year with no intention to stay uh, long term or maybe another year if they re-upped, but they were not, uh, permanent residents. Nobody had, uh, vehicles registered to the property and the road registration was downstate. They were all natives of the New York City area to which they probably returned after graduation. So I see a lot of similarities here, uh, between, uh, this situation and what we had, uh, on Beethoven Street and, uh, you know, I'll fast forward. It was a happy ending because, uh, the the owner was required subsequently to rent to families today. The property is owner occupied and we've had no issues. The neighbor fits in great with the neighborhood. Uh, nobody's attempted to have a similar, uh, single, uh, room occupancy type rental, uh, in the neighborhood and, uh, you know, I just asked that the zoning board, uh, enforce the, uh, the regulations that R1 was, was meant to have. This is meant to preserve the, uh, the quality of the neighborhood for families. And, uh, I'm proud to be here to stand up for the neighbors. And when I had this situation a couple of years ago, uh, the letters were sent out. I thought I was fighting this battle alone and to my surprise, there are a number of residents that felt the same way I did. And, uh, I appreciate their support and, uh, so I'm happy to do the same thing, uh, this time around. So thank you for your, uh, consideration. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Steve Cashmerek. I live on Bennett Avenue. We just moved. We moved, we picked that neighborhood because it was a neighborhood, a nice city neighborhood. We looked at other neighborhoods, chose to live there. We, I, when I walk the dogs, two blocks down, cars are all over the place, garbage on the, you know. It's not, some students are good, some students are bad. But, you know, we chose to live in this district. And the, the law was in place. And my feeling is that the law should be enforced. Uh, family units, whoever designed the law there. So my, you know, my opinion is I don't see many of my neighbors here, but I'm, I'm coming because I just moved in and I'm concerned about, you know, a slippery slope. They always call it a slippery slope. You let one in and then there's president set and others come in and, uh, I'm, so my point is I'd like the, the law being enforced. And for the neighborhood that we chose to, chose to live in Binghamton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll remind everybody sitting up there, if you want to speak, there's some empty seats down here so you can stage yourself nicely. Y'all are doing a great job of limiting your comments to five minutes less, so thank you on that.
Oh, I'm going to take it far. Last, last time I was in, we got new, got new ceilings.
I, I have control of the mics though.
I was in here. My name's on that building, okay? Fourteen years, okay? All right. Uh, I know the neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood. Daughter lives in the neighborhood. They changed the law and the law is supposed to be abided by. I know there's circumstances that happen, okay? But they, there can be worse things than that. But the biggest problem we have is we buy all these, uh, pharma billings and are being bu- uh, bought at a low price and the assessment is never raised on them. And it's a, a catastrophe to the taxpayers of the, of the, uh, city of Binghamton that the, the, uh, student housing district should be reassessed immediately, okay? I'll give you one example. The David Funeral Home was bought for four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The Burns Boys did a nice job. They made twenty-one units out of it. They sold it for one million uh, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in a year afterwards. It's assessed to two hundred and fifteen thousand. It should be assessed for a million, two hundred thousand minimum and still giving them a break with the equalization rate. This is a travesty. You got, uh, twenty Front Street. Example. Uh, that was bought for, um, your income is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, the uh, they got nineteen units. And if you break it down, they're getting six hundred and eighty-nine dollars a year out of each unit in taxes. Okay? Uh, you, you've got to take a look at this whole area here and you've got to abide by the law and, uh, enforce it and you do not have to reassess the entire city because it costs between three and five million dollars and it takes three years to do. So just make everybody abide by the law.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Colton Emmett. I'm twenty-three years old and I live on the west side of Binghamton. Um, I think this issue mainly is just about keeping the integrity of the neighborhood. And I think what a lot of Binghamton residents are frustrated with is the fact that our entire city used to once be beautiful neighborhoods. And, you know, you, you got to watch where you drive now. Any which way you might turn, there's just pockets of you know, riffraff or just rundown neighborhoods that are rented out to students or section eight. And I think this is like the last little slice of urban living that is preserved. And families are there and, you know, it's just a well-preserved neighborhood that people really care about. And when you let that slip with the students, um, you know, you're just kind of leaving that door open for deteriorating. I mean, you, there's a clear line from where the student housing ends, Leroy and Chapin. Right where Kavanaugh's is, there's a clear line right where student housing starts and where, you know, the families still live and my grandmother grew up on St. John Ave and that was once a beautiful neighborhood and it's completely destroyed. Um, all the homes are just, you know, you can tell people don't care about them and you can tell when someone cares about their home and when someone doesn't care about their home. And unfortunately, you know, when you're renting to students, it's just a clear sign. You do not care about your home and you care more about the money. Um, I just bought a rental home. It's my first rental home and I could easily rent each bedroom for six hundred dollars and make a lot of money on it. But I want to do the right thing and the right thing is renting to people that need a home and that, you know, I'm going to make it very nice. I'm going to fix it up. My neighbors have came to me and told me, like, thank you for fixing up this house that has been problematic. And I think it's just about doing the right thing and like to the landlord, like, if you have all these neighbors, you know, coming at you saying that, hey, this integrity of this neighborhood is this and we want to keep it that way. I think it's just a matter of doing the right thing and, you know, renting to people who who, who want to rent a nice home in a beautiful neighborhood that has the integrity and fits the values of the neighborhood and just keeping that preservation of the neighborhood because it's a real fear living in Binghamton, you know, every angle of the west side is being encroached by something or another. And this is the last little pocket that I think has the history, the family values and, um, you know, people that actually love to take care of their homes, unless you live in suburbia, which you live in Vestal, so you don't really have to deal with the issues of the city, but the people who stay in the city care about these issues, want to fix them. And, um, you know, that's why they would stay in the city and don't move to suburbia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will add, there's some empty seats here for anybody who's still planning on speaking.
Hi, my name is Michelle Swan. Uh, my house is at twenty Johnson Avenue. It was my family home since nineteen sixty-eight. Um, I've been very concerned also about the encroachment and the Ablebenet Tract. There are signs put up in the perimeter of the neighborhood saying it's an historic district. I'm very worried it's not going to, if this goes through, this is not going to be an historic district. Uh, this weekend or last weekend, the whole SantaCon thing blew my mind. It took me fifteen extra minutes to get from one end of Binghamton to Front Street because nobody pays attention. There's no respect. There's, everybody's entitled. The traffic was hysterical and there was no police presence for the whole thing. And it did, it bled up to Front Street. It bled up to Leroy Street and, and I just don't see this as being it's, it's just not something that's going to come to a good end. And I also know firsthand from my own children trying to find an apartment to live in. They're not college students or anyone that is a Ten Johnson Avenue was a two-family house. I don't know when it became a three-bedroom on each side because I, I'm going to think that that wasn't the case originally. And I just think it's very unfair that no one can find apartments at a reasonable rate for a family or young family starting out. That's very important. Um, and I just think that if this, this is, this continues to happen, it's just not going to be a good end and there's not going to be an historic district left. It is, it's just a slice, just a slice of town that's left. And it seems like every time there's a college, someone owns a building, they don't live in it, then it's not owner occupied, so they don't have to look at it, but then something breaks. A, a porch, front porch railing falls off. That railing isn't replaced. It's not in historic correction like it would have been. It's some pressure-treated crack. And if you go, like, like Cole said, you can go from Chapin Street down and you can just watch the deterioration. And it's, it's just heartbreaking to me to see this happen. That's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you for coming.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Nick. I live at, uh, Nine Oak Street, so around the corner from actually, uh, Murray Street, the Murray Street, um, unit in question. And I want to echo everyone's sentiments up until this point. I think, um, you know, there's a reason for the zoning rules. They were just updated a year ago. And the same people who are asking for, um, are reprieved now, were asking for more then, so they've already gotten, the district has been expanded. So I don't think we need to expand it any further ultimately. Um, you know, it's, I'm going to say that, uh, eighteen Murray already is in need of upkeep. I, I don't, yeah.
I, I hate to interrupt you, but we're going to do the same thing for eighteen Murray.
Sure.
Uh, if you want to hold, you get, you're welcome to go now.
Oh, sure.
Or, or hold for eighteen.
It's also for Johnson though. It's the, it's, it's basically the, the sentiment here.
It's the same decision.
Yeah, agreed. Um, it, it's the same discussion, yes. Uh, basically, the discussion has come up that, um, if there's not enough continued enrollment in Horace Mann Elementary School, um, it will have to close. This has been discussed a number of times and unfortunately, this is one of the side effects of um, zoning changes and re, uh, reshuffling the zoning. Um, it's really important to me. I went to Horace Mann Elementary. My daughter up here, um, is set to go to Horace Mann and it's really important to me that she has her local elementary school to go to. Unfortunately, by living in Vestal, this doesn't affect the people who want the reprieve. Um, they're not affected by this at all. They don't have to worry about where their kid's going to go to elementary school. And it doesn't even sound like they're asking for, you know, um, their tenants to be grandfathered in, say, for an extra year or something. They're just asking for a full reprieve, which I don't think makes sense under the law. There's just not really any good reason for it. There's no benefit to the community. And I haven't heard one argue. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Uh, hi, my name is Diane Durgan and, um, my mom lives at Forma.
My mom lives at Forma Lard Avenue, which is on the corner of Johnson and Mallard in this district. Um, a couple of things that I want to bring up that haven't been brought up yet, about ten Johnson, um, because that's the property I'm familiar with. Is parking. The parking situation on that street is horrendous. Um, already with the people that live there, the parking is tough enough. But if I'm not mistaken, ten Johnson does not have a driveway or a garage. So. It does, excuse me, I'm sorry. Okay, I but I wasn't aware that it did. I didn't, I didn't remember that it did. Um, still. Uh, with six different people, I wonder how many cars. Uh, are using this small tract of land um between Chestnut Avenue and Mallard. Uh. I'm sorry for the landlord and I and I do appreciate the students. However, this is a neighborhood that has children. My mom has a side porch that we sit at during the summertime and. We have seen so many cars go through that stop sign. Which never used to happen, never in this neighborhood. They just fly through it and there's children. Everywhere. People are walking dogs everywhere and. It's just a, a, it's a different situation. It's become a different area already. And I just don't want to see that creep any further into this Bennett tract. Um. I think that's the only point that I wanted to make that hadn't been made yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else here that was, had comments for or against John, ten Johnson application? Yeah, you want to bring your mic? We'll be right with you. We'll, we'll get to everybody. Don't worry about it.
My name is Susan Zalinski. I live at twelve Johnson Avenue. And we've, my husband and I have lived there for twenty years. When we bought the house. There were, there's a family in each side of the duplex who kept the place very nice. Plus, the landlord did also. Then he sold the property and. Students have been in there ever since. And the apartments are furnished. There's furniture in there. They even show it online. If you look online, they show that that they're furnished. And the parking, she's right, it's horrendous. Because there's a possibility, and usually there are six cars. For that one house. And they can't use the full driveway. It's only made for one car because there's a bow window bay window that juts out into the driveway. And they can't use the garage because I understand that's reserved for the landlord. And. It's, the place is not kept up at all. In fact, I made a comment to the landlord when he was over there, which you never see him. And um, he, he, I said, the only time you're over here is when you want to rent the place out. Because the leaves sat in the backyard for months. There's, they chopped down a few trees. They're still there in the driveway. The front porch is falling down. I went up on it cup about a week ago and it's, it's not safe. It hasn't been painted in I don't know how long. And those, none of those students are related. They're not related and they're all from New York City. Um, see what else? Yeah, the parking is bad. I mean, the whole, the whole, I mean, the lady across the street complains. The guy next door to us complains. It's ridiculous. He should just pave the backyard if he wants to have that many tenants.
We had that discussion last month with another application, so that's, we don't want to get into that.
Yeah, it's just, it's really disgusting that. That this, this is a nice neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood. The neighbors are real, real friendly and nice and. You know, then we have this next door. Which is bad. I'm not saying that the students themselves are bad. It's just. It's not taken care of and they keep bringing more and more and more students because they can get more money. They can charge per bedroom. Anyway, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. This would have been really difficult to do back when we were doing Zoom. I can see all your little faces coming up in the computer screen where you wanted to.
Uh, my name is Cassandra Alicia. I live at four, four, five Robin Lane in Vestal. Um. Sure. Uh, my husband and I um. Lived on the west side for seventeen years. Um, we moved to Vestal last year. Um, contrary to what I've heard, our daughter, just to be clear, does not go to Vestal. She goes to Johnson City. She goes to school in Johnson City. Um, we lived on Era Street, then we moved to Quarry, um, then we moved to Highland. Um, I just want to say that. Um, we are not in any way arguing that these tenants are related. Um, we are following the law and the law states that four or more unrelated people do not meet the functional family equivalent. We understand that. We're not in any way opposition to that. The law states that three unrelated people can live together, may appear before the zoning board of appeals. And present that they do qualify as a functional family and that was the purpose of us coming here today. Um, in terms of ten Johnson Avenue, um, my husband has already addressed um. The case we've made that they do, we feel they do meet this equivalent as a functional family as has our attorney. Um, just in in reference to um, the aesthetics of ten Johnson Avenue. Um, like my husband said, we have never, we've, we've had a complaint about leaves that we've addressed. Um, we have had no other complaints brought to our office or our office staff, which is located on sixty-five Leroy Avenue. Um, our phone number is readily available across the city of Binghamton. We are easy to find. If there are any issues, we address them promptly. Again, we, we, we support the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, we lived in this neighborhood. Um, we in no way want to um harm the integrity of the neighborhood. Um. Uh, you may, in terms of what the, the last lady said. Uh, we do have a full-time office staff, so they, we do have a full-time maintenance staff, so it's not likely that you'll see us there all the time. We have people maintaining the properties. Um, that we pay to do that because we do want to maintain every single one of our properties the best we can. Um, so we just want to make clear a few of those things and and certainly we are not asking for a full reprieve in any way. Um, we have, that is, that is not what my husband came here and said. That's not what we're asking for. We want to follow the law and what we're simply saying is. These leases were signed prior to the zoning legislation that was passed. Um, we feel that these, these tenants contribute to the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, that they do meet the functional family equivalent and we'd like them to be able to finish out their lease. Um, without being concerned that they may have to, they may lose their housing.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed? Interpretation? All right. At this point, we would. Um. Can I ask you a question? What? We keep hearing reference to the, all right, keep hearing reference to the previous uh. Requirements and the new requirements of the law. Do you have uh in writing somewhere uh so we could? Clearly look at what the old permitted was versus what the new permitted is?
Yeah, we could give you the old definition of family and the new definition of family. The definition of family really is the only thing that's changed. At least since two thousand and six, the code has said that in the R districts, all dwelling units have to be occupied by a family. Or the functional equivalent of a family. All the amendment did was add uh a little more clarity to that family definition for the purpose of enforcement. So that when you have four or more college students, there's a presumption that they're not a family. And it sort of fast-tracks the enforcement process a little bit, but. That that definition of family, um. Sorry, the, the rule that that dwelling units have to be occupied by a family had been there again since at least two thousand and six, probably before, but I can confirm that. It's been there since two thousand and six.
But it's had a more recent update like last year to actually define things more clearly.
Exactly, yeah. So just to make it easier when you have a large group of of unrelated people. For the zoning officer to, to pursue enforcement because before um. There was a little bit more discretion. Uh, my time's up. There was a little bit more discretion on his part and he had to get into the weeds on like the behavior of the tenants and things like that, which can be complicated. Uh, for him to make a decision whether he feels somebody's a family or not. So. We tried to make it sort of more black and white so that he can, if there's a large group of students, he can confirm that and cite them.
Okay. And then the, the current number is. It's not four. What are the numbers cited specifically?
So four or more students is, is easier to prosecute. That does not mean that a group of three unrelated people, whether they're students or not. Uh, it meets the definition of family. It's just a little bit more difficult to enforce and they have a better chance. Appealing to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. Cause that cleared everybody? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor or against uh ten Johnson? Sure. If you have a point to be made, come on up, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Margaret Smith. And nineteen Vincent Street. Um, and again, this isn't really about for or against. Where did we come up with a magic number of four? And who created the definition of a functional family? Because when we looked at it, the criteria is conflicting. Just because you eat together. Or you live in a one-family house with one kitchen does not mean that you share all the expenses. Most renters do share expenses for utilities. So that criteria really doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You know, children who live in dorms, um. Who live over at the university. Might share food. They might prepare food. They might consume food together. It doesn't mean they're a family for the university. Inmates in prisons. Share cells. They share dining areas. Sometimes they prepare food together. It doesn't mean they're a functional family.
Some of those are a lot easier to figure out.
Does not mean they're a functional family. Um. He indicates the apartments are furnished. So I don't know that sharing furniture is necessarily or bringing furniture. Is another reason to believe that someone is a functional family. When I think of a functional family, I think of, well. Are they my dependents? Okay, do my tax returns reflect these people? Are his tenants dependents for each other? No. Are they related? No. So all the criteria that went into making this functional family. Seems kind of. Not reasonable to me. And to try and prove that someone has lived together for four years. We all probably see that. Most students in our area move in in August. Most students, based on what you see on the curb, leave at the end of May. And they don't live there for a year. So that's another criteria that I don't think fits. In, in all of what we're trying to figure out. So my question would be. Who made this criteria? It could have been very simple. Three or four unrelated. Individuals can't live together. It, it could be simple. Someone muddied it all up with a lot of verbiage that was really not necessary in my mind. And doesn't prove that you are a functional family. So that would be, my question is, does the city have an ability to amend? Or eliminate some of this verbiage, which doesn't seem to be reasonable to me? And um, who in fact came up with this language and who can amend it or eliminate it?
I believe it was probably, if it was not. Come up by the uh, um, city council. It was approved by a city council and put into place by the council. Where it came from, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, thank you. Those are just, it's not a pro or a con. It's just. I don't understand why all this verbiage is there when it's, it could be a one-sentence, very simple. Two or three unrelated individuals can't.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be a.
Don't take this wrong, but I'm sure it was written somewhat by lawyers. Don't, don't take it wrong, but.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to add anything? We, we've still got eighteen uh. Murray, thank you to, to finish up. So at this point, we would normally. Uh, try to make a motion to close the public hearing and, and to uh deliberate. Um, but before we close it, I would like to. Discuss it on what we, what we do moving forward. I think we have a lot to digest here. Um, as members of the board. So I'm going to uh make a suggestion. Uh, of what we, of what our course, next course should be. Um, we've heard a lot. And I would suggest perhaps that we uh. Uh, proceed down our path and go to the next step of closing the public hearing. For the time being, with the ability to reopen it next month, giving us the time to give this uh further. Um, time to consider all the points of view that have been expressed here. How do you guys feel about that?
I agree with that. I would just ask that the applicant provide the information pertaining to the voter registration. Car registration, driver's license, information for the residents of those units. Um, and if possible, can the city provide us with some precedent? For similar cases. I know Steve mentioned one, um, but I'm sure there are others and I'd like to see public handle.
We can do that and then uh, um. I'll also add that if there's new information being submitted to the record, then uh, the public hearing should remain open.
Uh, uh. Well, yeah, then we, we just table it.
You would just leave the public hearing open and table it.
I'd like to have this, one of the city attorneys here also. So he could provide us with more information.
Absolutely. That's a very good point. Um, typically, these need, for, for those of you who have never been here before, typically uh. Binghamton City Council is here to make sure we don't do anything that's. Way out there to keep us on. In line with, with what is legally supposed to be happening in these proceedings. And I'd feel more comfortable if we, when we get to the point of a, a decision on the interpretation that uh. That council has had a chance to review because they, they will have access to the tapes of this meeting. And be able to listen to what has been uh discussed, all testimony given.
I just want to let everyone know that because the public hearing is being left open. And uh, it's public information that the next meeting is January ninth. We will not be redoing the public notice process. Uh, so the public hearing will remain open. You can still submit comments. Um, you just won't be getting the letter in the mail or seeing the sign of the property. Us notifying you today cer- that the public hearing will continue serves as that legal notice.
Everybody get that? All right, so. Without any further discussion, I guess I would make a motion to uh table the discussion of ten Johnson Street until our next scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
And that's January ninth, would you say? Can you second that? Can I have all in favor? All in favor. So. Further explanation, those of you who did share today, you do not have to come back and share again unless you. Would like to, if you have additional information. Uh, but if you've already spoken, given your concerns, that's already part of the record. Okay? Just want to make that point.
And one more thing, we did receive twelve letters in opposition that, that are part of the record. The, the board has had a chance to see them and they can be read by the public uh upon request.
Yes, and I, I do. Yes, and I I do, uh, I rec- recognize a few names of people that have spoken that actually had letters in there too. So um, if it's been submitted, it's part of the record, you're not going to be, it's not going to be ignored. It's all part of the record. Okay, so that that sets number ten Johnson aside for the time being. I would now like to uh, introduce our next case, eighteen Murray Street. It is the appeal of zoning officer determination for a group of three unrelated individuals that do not meet the uh, criteria for a family or functional unit, uh, factual equivalent of family in the R one residential district. Come on down.
Yeah, Mark Alicia, my wife Cassandra and I, eighteen Murray Street, we do live in Vessel, four four five Robin Lane, where we were west side residents for uh, many, many years. Um, and again, I just want to start, we are not asking for this to be a permanent change and be allowed to grandfather and to rent the students forever. These locations, we're asking for students to be allowed to finish their leases because they were signed before the changes were made. So eighteen Murray Street. Um, this property we purchased in two thousand and nineteen. Um, a long, long time ago, the same owner owned sixteen Murray and eighteen Murray. Um, now my wife and I own both these properties. Uh, my wife actually lived in sixteen Murray in two thousand and five while in college, and she knew the students who lived in eighteen Murray. Um, this property eighteen Murray has been continually rented to college students since two thousand, twenty-three years ago, when my wife's old landlord purchased the property, that was Robert Baxter. Um, and students may have lived there prior to that, but for its twenty-three years, it's been continual use of students in that neighborhood. Um, eighteen Murray is rented to college students. Um, the property you own next door at sixteen Murray is currently rented to families. Um, the neighbors here in this neighborhood also have my phone number. Um, I have received calls from them from time to time. There was a call about a year and a half ago about uh, my lawn service missed um, the property on their list, and we went over and had the grass cut the next day. Uh, we did have a neighbor complain about the exterior paint on the house, which was certainly needing of um, some help, and uh, we had the exterior repainted this summer. Um, to my knowledge, there hadn't been any police calls or any um, anything terrible happening to this property that caused uh, much concern or make it um, out of um, place with the rest of the uh, neighborhood. Did you, you hear all that? Okay. All right, I'll start again. Eighteen Murray, my wife and I purchased this property in two thousand and nineteen. Um, a long time ago, the same owner owned sixteen Murray and eighteen Murray. Um, dur- um, now my wife and I own both of these properties. Uh, my wife lived next door at sixteen Murray in two thousand and five while in college and knew the students who lived at eighteen Murray at that time. This property eighteen Murray has been continually rented to college students since two thousand, when my, when it was purchased by my wife's old landlord, Robert Baxter. That's at least twenty-three years of continual use as a student rental. Uh, eighteen Murray is currently rented to college students, sixteen Murray is currently rented to families. Um, the neighbors have my phone number, and I have received calls from over time. Um, about a year and a half ago, uh, my lawn service missed the property on their list. Um, the grass was too long, and we made sure it was mowed the next day. We also received calls about the exterior paint on the house, and we had this property completely repainted um, this summer. Uh, to my knowledge, there's been no police calls or anything that's been happening to this property that would um, cause concern or make it out of character for the rest of the neighborhood. Um, on the we'll do this. I I also want to just state that we're just looking for equal enforcement. We know there are dozens and dozens of properties in these R one and R two zones. Um, and we know letters have gone out. We've seen them in internet discussion forums for landlords. We we know city officials have told us there was fifteen plus letters that went out about the same time as as ours. No one else has appeared here. Um, there was nothing on the agenda for November. There's nothing on agenda for December. I don't know when the January agenda comes out, but we want to make sure everyone's being treated equally. There are folks from out of town, um, from down southern areas of the state or near Jersey who don't even know what these rules are, and we want to make sure there's equal enforcement and everyone is treated um, the same. Um, and then the big question is, you know, what is allowed? Are 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 roommates not allowed in Binghamton anymore in R one and R two zones? Are two nurses not allowed to live in a house on Johnson Ave or Murray if one of them takes night classes? Um, is that not allowed? If if a neighbor complains to them, do they have to come here? Do we have to pay attorneys and fees to plead a case for two nurses because one takes night class? I mean, I I don't understand what is allowed, what isn't allowed. You know, are roommates illegal in R one and R two zones now? That's, you know, a big one of our questions. We don't know what we are allowed to, not allowed to do. A tenant calls and say, hey, we'd like to see this house. Do I have to, now I have to ask them certain questions about their education, their current enrollment process? Um, so just some things we just would like to um, kind of get some clarity on and just make sure that these um, people who, if two people want to live together, they aren't forced to live in a higher density neighborhood, they maybe are allowed to live in an R one or R two neighborhood. Um, so I guess we can do the same as uh, the last property with side A and side B, and we can go down the list. Cause in eight eighteen Murray, these students have, this is their third year living together. There are three students, this is their third year. One resident works locally. They did bring some of their own furniture and appliances, and they do share their rent costs, utilities, internet and other household expenses. They also share in the preparation and storage and consumption of food. In this particular side, um, tenants are actually here tonight. Um, they may speak um, here shortly. Um, one of these students is uh, traveling abroad in the spring. The question is, well, what do I do? Do I sublet my room? Are we allowed to live here? Um, you know, so starting in a few days, you know, when spring semester start, there's only going to be two residents in this property. Are the two residents allowed? Do they have to find a third? Are they allowed to find a third? These are some questions we'd like some clarity on. So that is eighteen Murray. The other side of this house is twelve Vincent. It has a Vincent side address because that's where um, coming from the street. Um, all three are working locally. This is their first year living together. But they did bring some kitchen appliances themselves, and they do share in rent costs, utilities, internet and other household expenses, and they share in the preparation, storage and consumption of food. That's, that's all the information about this particular property. More welcome to ask many other questions about it. Um, but again, we're not looking for a permanent change. We'd like them to be able peacefully live out um, their lease at this property um, without concern, and uh, we'd just like some clarity on what we can do with these properties going forward. And if two people contact us to rent the apartment, do I have to say you're unrelated? You're not allowed to live here because one of you potentially is taking classes. Do online classes count? Is it only if you're enrolled in the university? Um, so it's just, it's very vague, and we'd like to know that, hey, going forward, we can rent to roommates if necessary. Maybe two is a, two is a good number. Maybe three is not a good number. We never rent to over three in these districts. Um, but really just trying to have a conversation about what can we do going forward.
Thank you very much. You summed it up well. Uh, any questions for the app?
Yeah, how long did you say your lease was up for?
Leases go till the end of May. There's only about five months left.
And that's for Murray Street.
For both of these properties.
Okay.
For both. We didn't ask anyone if they wanted to renew, you know, at ten Johnson, we had the the left side, this is their second year there. You know, when this happened, we got these notices uh, right when the semester started again. So we didn't, you know, typically go and ask our residents, hey, how are things going? Would you like to renew? Are you having thoughts on this? Or you want to maybe wait till later in the year to make that decision? We haven't had any of those conversations because we've kind of been in limbo about what is allowed and isn't allowed. You know, are are they a family? If they've been there for two years already and kind of meet many of these criteria, can they live there a third year? Or do they have to, I have to say, no, I can't do that. You know, does that bring up fair housing? Um, you know, issues with with us, you know, we're, we need to follow fair housing laws and about who I can, you know, when I take phone calls, I need to ask, I I can ask some questions, I can't answer any questions. Can I steer them to another property? That might be illegal too. So again, you know, how do we address these concerns and be fair to all people who potentially want to live in that neighborhood? Um, again, a lot of questions that still need to be answered to help us do our job um, appropriately and uh, make the city a better place.
I agree. A lot of these questions need to be answered.
And this is why I suggested it'd be nice to have an attorney, the city attorney here for the next meeting.
Yep. Any other questions for the app can right now? Okay. And we're going to uh, open the public, uh, make a motion to open the public hearing for eighteen Murray Street.
And twelve Vincent. Other, that's all, that's combined.
Twelve Vincent, okay. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Nice.
Okay, we're going to do this the same way we did the last one. So if you would like to take a seat.
I'd just like to say thank you all for your time. I I do appreciate all this and being able to have a conversation about it.
Thank you for coming. Again, I'd like you to feel free to come up. There's a a row of seats to wait for you. Uh, five minutes ish max would be nice, and I'd like to get everybody, let everybody have a chance to be heard, but uh, I'd also like to get home tonight.
Hello. I'm Alex. I currently live at thirty-two North Street, as I already discussed before. Um, I actually just purchased seven Oak Street, which is which is behind, um, somewhat behind eighteen Murray. So I chose that neighborhood because it is R one, right? Which means that it really should be owner occupied. There should be any more than three unrelated individuals living there. And so the fact that we're challenging this is odd to me because there's so much more space in the city of Binghamton to allow this to happen in the R two and R three zones. So um, I'm just not really sure why we're even entertaining any of this at all. Um, I've lived in an R three zone for the last ten years on Chapin and North, uh, two different locations, north of Main Street. And I will tell you that, you know, the neighborhood back in the nineties kind of took a turn for the worse, and it was because of situations like this where houses were once owner occupied, and over time they were sold, they were rented. And there was just less care. People moved to the suburbs, they moved downstate, they moved wherever. And as a result, the north of main neighborhood is the way it is now, right? People, e- even my own friends sometimes are scared to come to my house. Um, so I don't want the same thing to happen to the R one district. And somebody, the young gentleman who spoke before about his grandmother's house in St. John, it's really the same situation that um, you know, this is like the last glimmer of hope in the city of Binghamton, uh, where people can really owner occupy and feel like they're living in an urban setting that is very safe. And so we shouldn't be challenging that at all. Um, just see if I have anything else to say. The last thing I want to mention is I was looking at the city charter. Chapter four ten says that you cannot uh, lease a bedroom, and I believe Mark just mentioned subleasing a bedroom, potentially subleasing a bedroom. Um, which obviously does not align with the city charter.
Okay, thanks. And I will note that we did get your letter in uh, opposition. So thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Mark Whalen, eight Chapin Street. Five years ago, my wife and I bought a beautiful old Queen Anne Victorian uh, on Chapin Street down near the river. Just fabulously beautiful home. Never thought that I would own a home so nice. I grew up on the south side of Binghamton, just decidedly more middle class. Um, I feel like one of the luckiest people alive. But since we've been there, uh, you know, we've, we've noticed a creeping abuse of of neighborly, uh, you know, uh, intent from people that, from landlords, absentee landlords who who bought places, uh, one, one landlord down near the river bought a a big house and has opened up an illegal boarding house, and I think Code knows about that. Um, another landlord bought a house, put some, put, put money into it, did a nice job uh, renovating it, and then opened up an Airbnb, an illegal Airbnb. Uh, they were uh, unfortunately not smart enough not to advertise. They advertised, we found the advertisements, uh, the parties advertised themselves. Uh, you know, we woke up numerous times at three in the morning on weekends. Uh, the uh, so it's, it's, it's uh, I think what you're seeing here is, is a lot of people that are under, feel like they're under siege. The uh, we've already lost a lot of families uh, who have decided to to move to the suburbs because they think, they, they think the schools are better. I I don't, and I know Steve Seabassad doesn't think so either. Uh, but uh, so we've lost a lot of young families. What we have left are people my age that that have bought places and and uh, and we lovingly care to these, take care of these places and and uh, um, and we, we would like peaceful enjoyment of our property during our, our senior years. Now, uh, different people have mentioned things. There's, there's, there's uh, I'm a landlord, you know, I own uh, five, two families. Um, and what I tell my tenants is, you know, you treat the property with respect. You treat your neighbors with respect. If you don't, you're out. It's that simple. Um, I have rented two, two uh, students. I rented the two students in a three bedroom. And uh, they abused their privileges, and I said, call your parents, tell them to come and get your stuff. You know, get out. Um, it's, it's uh, I I truly believe in, in being neighborly here in the city of Binghamton. It's, it's uh, um, I spent my entire life here, and I understand, you know, landlords want to know what are the rules? What are the enforceable rules? Uh, but there are landlords who you know, will buy outside this so-called student zone, uh, which is what we call it. Um, in hopes of getting lower priced properties. Uh, they're, they're basically uh, they're not able to compete with the hedge funds and these corporate, corporate America that is buying student housing all across the country. Um, and I agree with Jack Cahill. I think that when somebody pays, you know, four hundred thousand dollars for a two-family that that students live in and and it's it's assessed for sixty thousand. Well, they should be looking at increasing the, the uh, the assessment because that's their, their business model. Get the kids in there, minimize the rent, oh, minimize the, the uh, the expenses and take out as much money as you can to satisfy your, your uh, your investors. Okay, uh, I guess there's a couple, I, I guess I had a question for the, for the uh, the applicant for the, you know, override of of the variance or for who seek, who sought a variance. Um, and that would be at the end of this lease, do they intend to go back to the, the, the two you know, or less than three people in in that apartment? And I mean, that's, that's the, the law as I understand it. And the, the law may need a little bit of cleaning up at, at, at uh, the other thing is, is uh, enforcement. You know, we've, we, myself and a bunch of neighbors have, have uh, um, corresponded with people in code enforcement and and planning. And they say, well, we can't get in, we can't find the landlord, the landlord's avoiding us. Uh, you know, none of the residents, none of the eight people living in the illegal boarding house will talk to us. Um, well, there, there must be some way of getting information, of getting factual information from, from these, these people, or maybe just, you know, doing a, a uh, you know, a, a court order to, to vacate, you know, uh, I don't know. It, it, that's, that's for the lawyers. Uh, um, again, it's, it's uh, there's, there's tremendous frustration. Um, for those of us who who simply want the peaceful enjoyment of our neighborhoods and uh, at, at some point, I'll, I'll move, but I hope it's either into a nursing home or a McCormick's. I'd rather, but I, in the meantime, I, I'd really like to enjoy my home peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Hi, Barry.
I think so in fact, the whole, that's the prostitute living as a family, not living as not related individuals in an apartment. There are other citizens who permit sites of housing, but not in R one. By not following the legal definition of a family, the city is taking the bait off of the neighborhood. Also, by doing this, the city is also evaluating houses that are for sale. If somebody's looking to buy a house, they're gonna have to take it, they want to put it to housing, or they want to be like a family. It's too stupid. Let's put them in presenting other landlords who run property, it's still be the same thing. I don't want positive results of this appeal. Therefore, I ask you to decline this appeal to the neighborhood. I don't understand why city being what they were doing was it done to appeal the make the bus is done to appeal the neighbor. It must have been done to appeal the landlord with the suit. We know every citizen, why are you going to have laws at all? It's the same old thing when I come to pretty town. This takes care of all the people that come in the thing I said, all these landlords, give a break. Oh, downtown will get back great. What are you doing? It's the same old story. What are you doing for the people that are here for twenty third and forty years? That's the nothing. They could care less if we move.
Thank you, Barry.
I'm sorry, the mics are weird. You have to get really close to them.
Is the green light on?
Closer. Let it go.
Okay, there we go. Okay. Um, my name is Amanda. I live at nine Oak Street around the corner from eighteen Murray. Um, moved there in September of twenty twenty. And one of the reasons that we did choose to live here is because it is a family oriented neighborhood. Um, I mean, my my husband grew up on the west side. He used to play with the the son of the people who live across the street from us. They still live there. It's 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 always been a family neighborhood. And it's important for us to raise our daughter in that. I mean, when last year a neighbor literally showed up on a snowy night delivering Christmas cookies. I thought I was in a Hallmark movie, but that's exactly what we wanted. And that's the type of community that we're trying to build. Um, students are trying to build their own communities on campus with their friends at various clubs, sports, and that's great. I think it's wonderful that we have the students here to help boost our economy, to bring great businesses to to Binghamton, to bring great restaurants. That is all wonderful, but they're not invested in the community in a long term way. Most of them do not stay beyond their four years at the university. And we're really trying to put down deep roots. And that's what these R one districts are designed to protect. Um, I also think that Barry raised a very good point that if you grant this exemption, what is to stop other landlords from continuing to rent to students? And then say, oh, well, can we just let them finish out the rest of their lease? And it just continues and it continues and it continues. There needs to be repercussions for not following those rules. Because otherwise, all of the landlords around, they're gonna hear about this and they're just gonna keep doing it. Um, there's no shortage of student housing here. I think that we could probably find a reasonable timeline to get the students who are currently living in these homes into appropriately designated student housing. Um, I mean, surely their current landlord knows a lot of other local landlord and property management companies. I'm sure there's sure there's space for them somewhere else. And these houses could be rented out to families instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. It's okay, I don't bite.
Hi, my name is Lily and I'm a resident of eighteen Murray. I'm a pretty anxious person and I wasn't planning on speaking today, so I apologize if my speech isn't entirely cohesive. I came here today because I'm worried about being evicted before the school year is up. I feel compelled to speak in order to try to address everything I've heard. First, I want to reiterate that I'm not arguing that my roommates and I should be classified as a family and that the lease was signed before the law changed. And it's been housing students for twenty three years, like Mark said. I hear and understand everyone's concerns and I can relate. I'm reluctant to say that I'm from Manhattan because of a few comments, but I feel it provides some background for me. I'm only able to live in Manhattan because my dad moved in nineteen seventy one from suburban Kentucky and we've been in that rent stabilized apartment since then. I live right by Columbia University and I've seen the area change right before my eyes. And it's even more apparent when I come back after a long time away, like when I'm in school. It makes me very upset to see my small local businesses from my childhood replaced by chains like Sweet Green, Lululemon and Starbucks all on one street. I love eighteen Murray and I appreciate its history. It's a beautiful eighteen ninety two Victorian home that my roommates and I try to decorate and take care of as best as we can. I love that we are right by Riverside Drive because I lived by Riverside Drive back at home. We've never had a party. We are respectful and we don't have a car, so we cause no parking issues. We've never had any complaints and our next door neighbors were very welcoming, including a police officer. I also see landscapers taking care of our lawn frequently. I understand why you all are worried for your neighborhood because even I'm appalled at the behavior of many students. I just ask that you please let us finish our lease because the thought of being evicted and having to find housing last minute is devastating to me. I've been with my roommate since my freshman year and I feel like a mini family with them. We always hang out in the house together and hang out in each other's bedrooms. We have a cat together and we split all expenses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lily. You did a great job. Ross, before you get started, I think uh, Tito has just a couple of words to say, not directed at you, but just to the uh, more to what was just said by the by the student renters.
Well, first I want to answer one of Mark's questions, which is what happens after this and so if any of these groups is found to be the equivalent of a family, uh, they can renew their lease. That that group is officially recognized as being the equivalent of a family. And so uh, they meet the code. If a group is found to not meet the definition of a family, then we take it to the next step, which is the court process. And frankly, given the length of that process, it's really unlikely that that uh, any of these groups will be out on the street before their lease is up. I mean, the next ZBA meeting is is a month from now. Assuming you make a decision in January and the court process starts in February or March. Um, that can take two to three months and uh, by that point will be to May, so.
So so the current tenants likely don't have an issue of uh, being concerned about where they're gonna be for till the spring, end of spring semester.
It's it's highly unlikely that that they will be displaced.
Regardless of what we do.
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
No, thanks. I appreciate it. Again, I'll try to keep short. Uh, there are some very insightful comments and questions about the definition of family. A lot of history went into that. They uh, back in the seventies, people wanted to move into neighborhoods and they had homes for people with mental disabilities, recovering addicts, and the zoning legislation was defined very narrow. Keep out people unrelated by blood or marriage. And the court said that's unconstitutional. So what the cities had to do was adapt to that and say, okay, we want people who are living in a family neighborhood to act like a family. And that's what all these people that we've been listening to tonight are saying. They don't want loud parties. They don't want people running stop signs. They want their kids to be safe. Okay, I'm very sympathetic, not only because I used to live at one fifty Oak Street, which is last I checked was a weedy lot. But I am currently the old man on the block, on my block in city of Ithaca. I'm the only non-student on my entire block. And there's a rule in my neighborhood that says if you keep the old man up after eleven o'clock, the Metallica starts at five AM and it wakes up the whole street. When they see me coming, they clear. Now, these folks don't want to be put in that position. Okay, they want to come home. They want to have a quiet environment. They don't want to be picking up beer bottles out of their yard. We need to do a better job of dealing with those neighbors. They are our neighbors. And I can tell you the leashes are trying very hard. And they want this to be a good outcome for their neighbors. They're hard workers. And if people feel that they're not being listened to by the leashes, forget about here. I mean, this is important, but they need to do better on that part. And I think they can. So there was a comment made by one of the opponents. We of course have another parallel application tonight. The record uh, was kept open on that. I'm urging the board to have a similar outcome tonight. The questions and the points about the change in the legislation after the leases was signed is extremely important. Remember when you went to school and they talked about ex post facto laws and you put that? Use that phrase if you didn't really know what it meant. That means if I'm doing something today that's legal and you change the law to make it illegal while I'm doing the thing, you can't prosecute me for it. And that's the problem where you have an existing lease in this neighborhood and you change the law after the lease has been signed. There's also something called a breach of contracts clause, says a state can't enter or a municipality can't interfere with contracts. So the people had the questions about zoning legislation. If you Google McMinn, M C capital M I N N versus Town of Oyster Bay. Google that. You're gonna, if if you want to educate yourself, it is actually fairly interesting if you're a zoning geek. But um, what people want is to we want to, we want to work on changing behavior. And I think there's a better way to do it than this zoning legislation. I know that's beyond your purview. I want to help the leashes. I am a former resident of the city of Binghamton. I want to help you. I think it's a great place. And uh, what I asking you to do is just to hold steady until these leases are over. I I uh, I think that Mr. Seacrest would, well, I can't put words in his mouth, but I I appreciate you wanting him to be here. I think you should as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Terry Runia. I live at five Chapin Street, so I live in the neighborhood of eighteen Murray and twelve Vincent. And I I want to say that I I think it's unfortunate. I feel like every time there's any kind of zoning issue that comes up and I come down to see what's going on because I was really involved in that at one time, it's the leashes who are here. And I I am a little concerned about that because um, they are very responsible landlords who are not strictly student landlords and who do rent to everybody and who've taken my phone calls when I've had concerns. And um, I worked with them in another life on some stuff and I just find them to be responsible and responsive. All of that being said, this R one neighborhood needs to be preserved as an R one neighborhood for a variety of reasons. And here's the thing, that house at eighteen Murray has been a student house for as long as I have lived in in my house, which has been twenty years. So I mean, I know it's been a student house. I don't know if anyone has ever complained about the students. I don't know if there's ever been an investigation. But I do know that other properties throughout the west side have had the zoning investigations where they look at things like car insurance. And uh, car insurance, car registrations, voter registrations, all of that to, you know, are there locks on the bedroom door, all of that to determine you know, whether or not the group is functioning as a family. And these were in our two districts that I saw this happen in. The problem is, last year when this legislation was changed, it was not it was not clarified and in a strong enough way. And so in addition to just these, this, these two properties, I guess, twelve Vincent and eighteen Murray, three and ten Johnson, which I'm not familiar with at all. You have to understand right before and then immediately after this legislation was changed in this neighborhood, we've had two air, at least two Airbnb's open. Next door to where I live is a full on rooming house that we can't get before this board. That that has eight to eleven people living in it at any given time for we, they pay their rent legally. They have locks on their bedroom doors. They share a kitchen and they've never been here to this board. So I think part of the frustration that you're hearing from people here is that there's no clarity. Right? So no one knows are what the leash is doing? Is that an illegal use? Is it a legal, nonconforming use? Like, no one is sure. And when the legislation changed, that wasn't clarified. All of the uh, I'm not gonna say that because I haven't agreed with all of the arguments, but many of the arguments that I've heard tonight, including the concerns about Horace Mann and all of our elementary schools, the fact that we know that we have so many families in Binghamton who are struggling to find housing. And the fact that we know that student housing is a cash cow. I mean, that's why people do it. And we have to find a way to address that. We have to find a way to keep it out of low density neighborhoods. We, you know, eighteen Murray and twelve Vincent Street, there's no driveways there. So I heard the tenants say they don't have a car. That's great, but I can tell you, particularly during alternate side of the street parking, I invite all of you tonight, when you leave here, get in your cars, drive down Vincent Street and turn down Murray. And just see, I mean, I will say at least the rooming house has a big driveway. But the problem is that there are so many ramifications, whether it's students. It just, it needs to be clarified. Do I think we shouldn't have roommates in Binghamton? No. We obviously have to allow for that. Young professionals need to be starting out. But I do think we need to control this situation. And we need to control it particularly with large groups of students. I think this board and the next city council are going to be tasked with having to clarify these things. But I would ask this board, as long as you're clarifying these things, put some teeth into enforcing. Somebody put some teeth into enforcing it because this particular neighborhood is on edge and feeling, I used, I heard someone use the word under siege. That's exactly how people are feeling. And unfortunately, you know, it could be any any property that they are upset about. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Cassandra Leisha, I just wanted to add, we do appreciate everyone's comments here tonight. As I said, we lived on the west side for seventeen years. We've been a part of this conversation every single time it comes up. I just wanted to add specifically, we're here because of our application for ten Johnson Ave and eighteen Murray. We have not heard one specific complaint today about our tenants at ten Johnson Ave or eighteen Murray Street. Again, we, we want to follow the law and we would like to know, just like everyone else, can we rent to two people in these properties? Can we rent to two people on each side that are unrelated? And we're okay with that. We just, we, we need some clarity on this issue. Additionally, we are, as, as Terry also said, asking for enforcement equally and evenly across the city. We know of hundreds of other students that are living outside the proposed zone and we followed the law in our application. We're here today, but there needs to be equal enforcement across the board. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you for coming. I see one more coming. I must say, your daughter is being very well behaved up there. Thank you very much. Hi.
Hi, Margaret Smith again, nineteen Vincent. I am here to say, yes, I do oppose having students in our neighborhood. We have six student housing issues in our neighborhood. Terry is correct in that enforcement, even discovery of student homes is difficult in neighborhoods. I suggested using license plates. And there are probably anywhere from six to eight cars on Vincent Street in one block at certain times of the day, people coming and going, people not always parking respectfully. And we have had years where, yes, the students have been good and respectful. And then we've had years where police have been called because of parties. We deal with the same issues as everyone on the west side. Students don't always look at garbage as garbage, or maybe they just don't see it. Which is something that I think is important to the integrity of all of our neighborhoods on the west side. The fact that they're saying that they are responsible landlords for at least three years. Those two residents attached on Murray and Vincent have needed to be painted. There are areas of rot. There are shingles that were never replaced. The lawn does not always get mowed. And we had a serious sidewalk issue and I don't believe the sidewalk would have been fixed unless there were multiple calls to the city asking that the sidewalk be repaired. So one of the issues that we all think about is what does this landlord put back into your neighborhood, into the equity or into the security of homes around it by keeping their place up? And I will just honestly say, I don't know them personally, but I don't believe that they have done anything voluntarily to enhance this property. I think it's always been because it has been complaint driven. I, I hope that the city does find better ways for zoning to, to discovery, as in discover where these student homes are, other than it just being complaint driven by neighbors. And I hope that they give them better tools for implementation of whatever they're trying to, whether it's going to the courts, going to the landowner. I, I'm not sure how responsive people in our neighborhood have been and obviously a lot of landlords aren't necessarily going to be truthful about how many people are living in their home. So again, what Terry said is correct, you know, I think it's very important that as you look at this in that whole package, you look at what is the definition of a functioning family? What is, what is the goal, you know, for implementing? Is, is it finding landlords? I don't think any of us sitting in this room today want to see any of these children or young people evicted. That's not our goal. I certainly think that everyone here would like to see them finish out their lease and not worry about that. But I also hope that the goal is that these landlords can't have them come back, okay? Or find three more new unrelated individuals to come forward and rent. So hopefully, you know, the city spends some time thinking about this and with your city council and thank you very much for having us off tonight.
Thank you, Margaret.
Steve Seprasad, thirteen Beethoven Street. I appreciate the board taking the time to make a careful decision and to consult the precedent from the fifteen Beethoven Street case that I'd initiated and there are about two or three others within about a year of when that had taken place. And what we've heard with this particular property on Murray Street isn't really different than any of those prior cases. In fact, you had the students living at the property that came up and spoke. And I don't recall them making the assertion that we are a functional family as evidenced by X, Y, and Z. So this would have been a really great time to bring that up. The burden of proof is on them, not necessarily us as the neighbors. So that was absent from the messaging. And I'd be curious about things like voter registration and such, although one of the students referenced having a permanent address in Manhattan, so I'll just move on to the next point. I think a lot of people hear debates like this and the narrative that permeates is that the Westsiders are against the students and it's not necessarily being against the students. It's wanting to preserve the quality of that family neighborhood. So I can tell you, we had another instance with property across the street from us at twenty two Beethoven, not long after the matter at fifteen was resolved. And I filed a complaint about that one and I think it never went anywhere because the people subsequently moved out. They got jobs somewhere else in a different area and they left. But those three people, young professionals, they were working at one of the television stations. I thought, great, when they came in, it's working professionals. It's not going to be students. This is going to be, you know, people who are going to treat the property respectfully. The first couple of weeks, no issues at all. They had a party on Halloween night and it was like worse than any party I see when I go back to Ohio State for like a football weekend. I mean, it was insane. And my breaking point was seeing somebody urinating out in the middle of the street. I called the cops within five minutes. That party was shut down. So it's not just the students. You can have that with people that have jobs and you think would be respectful and pay their rent and take the garbage out and do all things they need to do. And it was worse than, I would have rather had the students back than, than what we had saw that night. And it's not our intention to put the students out into the street before the academic year ends, you know, and we know it takes a while and in, in my case, by the time we had our, our ZBA hearing, it was maybe like March and the the board had ruled in our favor and the students were given until May to vacate. By that time, we were through finals and the academic year was over, but we were playing the long game. You know, we wanted to preserve it for the quality of the families. And so I'm happy to report, fast forward from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty three. It is, it is owner occupied. We, my family, we've lived in the property sixteen plus years. People across from us have been there ten or eleven. It is very stable, is exactly the model of the R one that we were meant to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Well, thank you all for your input. I, I would, little discussion here just to get us back to where we're headed. Again, and our point here is to look at the, the interpretation of the zoning officers determination of the whether, whether or not we have family units. And it entails looking at all this testimony and all the definitions and when the late laws changed and all the pertinent facts. So with that all being said, I would suggest that we table this as well as the other one to treat them similarly to reconvene next month with the, with this public hearing still open. With the understanding the applicant's going to come back with any further information for us to help us make our decision and the ability for us to have counsel present.
I agree. So I'd like to second that.
I'd like to add that the city will provide the additional information request at your presence as well.
Yes. Yes, yep. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so we are tabled till next month for this, for this case. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your patience. We'll see you next month. Tito, do we have any other business?
You do not.
Very good. And I would make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Thank you very much.